Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the Finance Committee Meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'll be filling in for Mayor Clark this afternoon. We have a few items on the agenda. The first one is the discussion regarding a sidewalk recruitment program, and I believe City Attorney Walker is presenting on this.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to share my screen. That works. Do you see it? Okay, this has come up over the last couple of years as a solution potentially to a problem of primarily, I think, gaps in sidewalks. And so we're going to talk through sort of what our ordinances say, what state law says, and how those might look like for sidewalk recruitment. So Title XI says that, of course, the title of streets, roads, both ways within our limits, which have been dedicated and accepted by the governing body, are held by us for the use, interest for public use and enjoyment. And one of the things that specifically says we can do, of course, is construct, reconstruct, repair, raise, lower, all those things to sidewalks. In our code, we require that the developer install sidewalks during the development process. So in the subdivision regs, it says sidewalks are required in all subdivisions in what is called the urban area after nineteen sixty-six. So this means not in A1 or A2 RE and rural cluster developments, which are usually part of a PUD. Sidewalks aren't required there, and then industrial areas adjacent to local and collector's streets, they cannot be required, but everywhere else they are. The code also says they have to be completed at the time the streets and the subdivision are installed, or you can do it on a lot-by-lot basis if you provide a surety, and so that's what you see a lot in residential neighborhoods. Of course, they don't want to put in the sidewalks before they built the house because they're just going to tear up the sidewalks building the house. So you often see that situation in multi-block developments. You can see here, these are the sidewalks that were identified in our comprehensive transportation plan, or sidewalks, areas where we don't have sidewalks, the gaps in sidewalks. The ones in purple are developer-driven, so those are ones that would happen as development occurs. We have some that are high priority for us, some that have been committed, not committed, et cetera. So you can see there's a lot of gaps in certain areas of town, and of course, older neighborhoods pre-nineteen sixty-six, there may not be any sidewalks because they won't require them. And so with our policy and the way sidewalks are addressed, undeveloped property usually means there are gaps in sidewalk paths. We don't have any right to use that property. We don't have easements or rights-of-way on property that hasn't been developed typically, and so when someone develops, they are required to dedicate that to the city, and that gives us the right to repair sidewalks or do other things with the sidewalks once the developers completed them. They, of course, deteriorate over time, and so the issue is always not only how do we put in sidewalks to fill these gaps, but how do we repair the sidewalks we have. Now, a lot of funding for that, and we have that fifty-fifty cost-sharing program that most of you are familiar with. If we get a report that a sidewalk is in disrepair, we'll share in the cost with the property owner. We have a saw-cutting program where we do sidewalks on more well-traveled thoroughfares typically to eliminate uneven areas, and that's because the city can have some liability for those once we receive notice of them. Under the statute, you can fund construction of sidewalks or repair sidewalks by issuing bonds. We talked about this probably this time last year when we were looking at the transportation bond. Those types of bonds require a higher voter threshold. Sixty percent have to approve that. And so typically, what we've done when we've issued bonds is we've taken a package to the voters where the sidewalks would be replaced as part of a larger street project, and that can be done as a public utility, which means fifty percent plus one, it would be all that would be required. You can also make assessments on lots and pieces of ground abutting the improvement based on the frac footage by statute. And then if there's a situation where an emergency repair is needed, council's able to pass an order, or a resolution, rather, saying we've got this emergency. You give the property owner three days to repair, and if they don't repair it, the city can repair it and assess the property owner. For that lot assessment process, it's a pretty detailed process. It's not unlike what we do with other improvement districts. We don't have a lot of those, but it's a similar process to a business improvement district, say. And so typically, that happens when you have a petition for more than half of the property owners, and that's determined by area of land liable for assessment. You get that petition. It's filed with council. Council determines whether or not it's sufficient, so no signatures, ownership record, that kind of thing. You can have hearings on the sufficiency of the petition where people can come and say, I didn't sign that. They don't have the right. That's my tenant. They didn't have the right to sign that, things like that. But if it's sufficient, council can ultimately direct an engineer to prepare the plans, a estimate of how much it would cost, and how that would be assessed, what property will be assessed. Once the engineer prepares that, they file that. We have a resolution that a council, we set a public hearing, come back, do the public hearing. If more than fifty percent of any of those property owners objects, then that property has to be excluded, and that might just be a block in the context of a much larger project, but that block would be excluded if more than fifty percent of the owners protested. Once the improvements are complete, then you come back, and council gets the final statement of costs and the final assessments, and we do an assessment roll, and they have to pay that back over ten years. So a couple of things here, of course, is if they're paying it back over ten years, we have to front the money, and then it assumes we've got easements or right-of-way for those sidewalks. So that's something to kind of keep in the back of your mind. Under our own recruitment process, we do this. I think we've done some within the last year, so all of you should have probably seen one of these before. This is typically for streets, street improvements, but that includes curbs, driveways, sidewalks, intersections oftentimes. And so we did go in and we declared the boundary of the recruitment project. Who would be assessed? We complete the street improvement, and we determine what those eligible costs were, so that could include right-of-way, because this process is really meant to even the playing field so that we're not paying a property that's undeveloped, or the right-of-way that they could develop, have them develop the property two years later, and be required to give us that land. We don't want to pay them for that land without them having to pay us back if they're going to develop the property. So you file your rapid list with all those costs, so not only the right-of-way acquisition for each parcel, but also the improvement costs by frac footage or linear feet. And then if development occurs within fifteen years, they have to pay back a hundred percent of those costs, plus any inflation or deflation rate, plus an administrative fee. If it doesn't occur within fifteen years, the recruitment amount reduces by five percent each year, so that by the end, by twenty years, it's not five percent. I'm not doing my math. Twenty percent. So by the end of the twenty years, they owe nothing, and we've lost our right to recruit that. So the statutory process is much more complicated than our recruitment process because every hearing has very particular notice requirements and timing requirements, and it can get kind of tedious. We've done this a little bit before, but not for these type of projects. The code provisions related to recruitment in Chapter sixteen really need to be amended because they are really dealing more with large street projects and not just sidewalk-only projects. But the biggest challenge I think we face when we look at these is how do we upfront the money? It still comes down to the funding issue that we've struggled with, and how do we allocate resources to sidewalks? In new development, you know, they're going to come back in at some point, tear out the sidewalk, then rebuild it as they develop it, more than likely. They're going to tear up at least a portion of that sidewalk. If we're talking about sidewalk repairs, it's a little harder to probably assess property owners when they wouldn't otherwise have had to put a sidewalk in. The statutory process is a ten-year payback, and then our ordinance is a twenty-year payback, so depending on which process you use, you're not getting that money back in the near term, more than likely. So with that, you know, the purpose of this is really just to introduce the discussion and see where you all want to go. Those are kind of our options on the table now. And if we wanted to move forward this, identify the funding for these projects, potentially amend the ordinance or use the statutory process. Statutory process, again, you don't necessarily get that right-of-way acquisition cost back. It's just the cost of the improvement. So little differences between those processes. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Not seeing any questions right now, but is this comparable to what other municipalities do? Is this similar? Did we look at that?
I haven't looked at what other cities are doing. That statutory process is available to every city, so it's likely that that's what would be used in most cities. I think most cities struggle with the same thing we struggle with, and that's limited resources and where to put those dollars. And so sidewalks are often done in terms of these larger street projects where we're doing complete streets with the bike lanes and things like that, and those are favored in the grant process as well now. So I think most cities are struggling with the same thing. We're struggling, and I don't know many cities with the recruitment ordinance like we have, but the statutory process is there for all.
Councilmember Hall.
So I have continued to be intrigued by this idea because it would really be a path forward for Core Norman, which probably has sidewalk infrastructure, and Core Norman is not in good shape. We do have these two programs in place, which have certainly helped, but this is probably one of the things that I hear about frequently and consistently across the ward. Number one, trying to help people understand why it's not the city's responsibility and why they have to, you know, pay for part of it, and, you know, making the cost-sharing program available for them to take advantage of. So I was wondering if you could just address what the advantages would be for parts of town that, particularly in Core Norman, where we don't have the opportunity of greenfield development, where a developer's going to come in and build a sidewalk.
Well, it provides an opportunity in established neighborhood that's under state law to go through this assessment process. It will take some organization because it wouldn't be a lot-by-lot thing. You'd want an entire block to be done at once, and so that would require petitions valid with the property owners. They would get to pay that back over ten years. So it's not a big cost in the immediate term from the property owner's standpoint. So it provides an opportunity in those neighborhoods where there are no sidewalks to get those type of projects done. It is a weird area of the law because although the statutes really put the repair on the property owner, if there's a defect in a sidewalk and we know about it, they can, if someone gets injured, they can file a tort claim, and the city has to pay for it. This is a very weird area of the law, and hard to explain to people, but that is, that is the law, is under Title XI. We can make the property owners repair those sidewalks, and we can assess them for it.
Do you, you may not have this information, but maybe someone else on, that's at the meeting today, could address, how many times has that actually come up that we've had, that we've been sued because of liability of some sort or another?
I have a very good memory, and I bet Sean has the same one, of one in particular because it was a high dollar, and it was out on Twenty-Fourth Avenue in Alameda, I think, correct, Sean?
Yep.
And then someone had walked across this vacant lot, gone outside of where the sidewalk would have been if it had been installed and well-maintained, fell in a hole, broke their ankle. They sued us. They sued the property owner. We were held liable. We had a trial. We appealed it. We had to pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I think, is what I recall. And that was even when they went out of where the sidewalk would have been. So it happened. It's not often, but we do get tort claims with ankle injuries and things like that when they trip and fall on a sidewalk. We typically, they're not high dollar, and we can work towards settlement on those, but we do get some big-dollar ones every now and then.
And has the property owner been found liable as well, or no?
Yeah, we're not in that case.
Well, the other, the other advantage I see to this is that you can, instead of parcel-by-parcel that you're dealing with a block or maybe a neighborhood, or maybe an entire historic district, if you get buy-in from the property owner. So I'm definitely interested in pursuing whatever the next steps would be to see what, I realize it's a process that we would have to look at code and other things like that, but I think that, you know, this is just something that does come up frequently, and we have significant part of Core Norman that has all kinds of issues with sidewalks. So the other thing I was wondering is, we have, I know we still don't have very many details, but with any kind of infrastructure projects that we might be coming, see coming down, if we have any kind of possibility to address sidewalk repair and reconstruction with connecting that to infrastructure funds that we might have available to us.
I know Sean and Daryl have been looking at that more than I have, but I think there is a possibility that that could be an infrastructure program, particularly if you focus on the ADA piece of it, an opportunity there. We're looking at all of those. We're waiting for this first federal package to issue the rules, for the street department to issue those rules, and then we know that infrastructure package is being pushed behind it, although not adopted yet. So we're looking at all that, and there's no shortage of infrastructure opportunities in Norman.
And I know we're really short on details so far, but something that I would definitely like to add to the list. And then if Mr. O'Leary could just briefly address for anybody who might be listening, we do have other sidewalk programs that, we have a sidewalk to schools program, and, you know, we have other things that we do to try to attend to, you know, filling in sidewalks and that kind of thing. So if you wouldn't mind just reviewing that briefly.
Happy to, Councilmember, and other Councilmembers and Chair. We have a number of programs. Business, I think, probably four to five hundred thousand dollars a year on a regular basis, as you mentioned, school-related programs, neighborhood programs, the accessibility program in the downtown. So those are repetitive programs every year in your capital fund, and council gets to select those locations many times by sort of a ranking system. Scott's put that up on the screen there. Another thing I'll mention, we did this a couple of years ago for council. If you add it all up, if you look at the investment in new neighborhoods, what Catherine mentioned was that every neighborhood after nineteen sixty-six has to build their own sidewalk. If you look at all of those that are built, if you look at all of our capital projects, so consider the Twenty-Fourth Avenue East project, two miles of sidewalks on both sides of the road was just completed. So if you take all that in total, we're investing about four to five million dollars a year in public sidewalks in Norman. We never really add it up that way. You don't see it in your capital program, but collectively, between the city, private developers, private property owners, neighborhoods, and so on, we're investing a lot in public sidewalks in both repair and new. So I just say that to say not to underestimate what we're doing as a community, and certainly as a city. But you're right, too. The challenges that we face are the pre-nineteen sixty-six neighborhoods where there are no sidewalks. Many of those in Ward Four, unfortunately. The repairs to sidewalks, we are never very popular when we have to send notices to our property owners that they have to repair their sidewalks in thirty days at any given time. I know right now Scott's team is working with twenty or thirty property owners at any given time throughout the year. And, you know, they always feel a little bit better once they find out the city is paying for fifty percent of those. That's a great program. So I would love to see, if we have additional federal funding, I would love to see that to just add to that program because there's an endless list of repairs that we would like to do. The other thing I would say about that program, and I think most property owners, once they sort of understand what it is, they actually start to like it because we take care of everything. They don't have to contract. They don't have to inspect. They don't have to evaluate anything, but we take care of it all for them. They just write one check. And it's, you know, on the average, a single property owner might write a check for three or four hundred dollars and get the entire sidewalk in front of their house in place. So while it's never welcome, they'd rather spend that money on something else. It is a really nice program once we're done, usually, and they're happy with the city taking care of that. So that's a program I'd love to see more money allocated to each year. The other thing I'll mention, particularly for Councilmember Hall in Ward Four, one of the other big challenges that you will face there, and we face all the time here, is that in existing neighborhoods, developed neighborhoods, those sidewalk projects are very, very expensive because we have to replace every driveway, and every house is already developed generally, and every house has a driveway or two. And so it would not be uncommon for an existing neighborhood sidewalk project to cost three or four times the cost of a new undeveloped area. And that's a real disincentive. That's when we start to lay out the cost for these new, or these existing neighborhoods, there's sticker shock, and usually they drop the project. That's sort of what happens. And it's unfortunate, but it is just a lot more expensive when you have to rebuild every driveway, get additional easements, make sure all the ADA slopes are met. It's really a challenge that we face in older neighborhoods.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, and I think it's really important for our residents to understand all of the investment that we are making with all the various programs, because you're right, when you don't, you know, when you're looking at each individual program, you don't realize the massive investment that we're making every year. But the need continues to be really, really great in these older existing neighborhoods, as you point out. So I, you know, appreciate just running through that, and definitely am supportive of, you know, beefing up that fifty-fifty cost match when we have the ability to do so. I guess that raised another question in my mind. If we're dealing with, let's just say, an average of twenty to thirty people a year, as you mentioned, are we able to accommodate all, everyone who, so far, do we have the funding to accommodate those that proceed with the sidewalk repair?
Great question. You know, rarely do we run out of money, but it has happened. And in those, in those situations, if we have a number of people in the pipeline, we've gone back to council and city manager and tried to secure more funding. We don't want anyone to be left out. It doesn't happen very often, but it does kind of come in spurts, you know. Sort of what happens is, it's sort of unfortunate. We don't go out looking for these, but what happens is you'll get maybe a citizen or two who get frustrated, and they turn in fifteen of their neighbors. And we have fifteen sidewalk projects. Of course, the neighbors are all mad at each other, and we go through that little ordeal. But it sort of comes in spurts, and then that neighborhood gets worn out, and they stop doing it. Then there's another frustrated walker, and we get another twenty. And so it sort of comes like that. We're in one of those right now. There were about twenty properties that we found in one neighborhood, and they're all having to repair their sidewalks here in the span of time. So that's really the other debate that we have here is how proactive would you like to be? We don't go out looking for them. There's plenty of them out there. I guarantee it. We could find hundreds if we were really proactive. Or is it something you want to target in certain areas? That's really what our horizontal saw-cutting program is. We really target those school areas, high pedestrian areas, campuses around OU, where we have the most walkers. And that's been a really effective program, too.
I think that is a program that's been really well-received as well. Yet you still have, I mean, I know just from my own walkable neighborhood that you have some sidewalk panels that don't even qualify for the shaving program because it can't, it can't really be done because it's so beyond what, what the capability of that is. So, yeah, this is a, you know, it's a big issue and a really fundamental one as we continue to work to, you know, develop walkable neighborhoods and these core areas of Norman that are certainly meant to be walkable, but can be very treacherous for just anybody who's walking on the sidewalk, but particularly for those who have any kind of mobility challenge. It's, it can be, it can be really tough. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
Can any of those sidewalks be covered by the street maintenance bond?
No, sir. Great question. We get that a lot. In fact, we got that a lot through the, through the recent election. That, that bond program and that language is written very specifically to spend that money only on street maintenance. So we're very careful about that. One exception to that is that the ADA, American with Disabilities Act, requires us, whenever we touch a sidewalk on a street project, we are required to make that sidewalk fully accessible. So that happens from time to time on these street maintenance projects where we are touching the radius, the curb radius, the ramp, if you will. And if it doesn't have a ramp, or if the ramp is not meeting the current standards, we are allowed to use those dollars to upgrade the sidewalk ramp at the corner. In fact, we just finished about sixty of those on a street maintenance bond program out in southwest Norman where there just happened to be a lot of ramps that needed to be upgraded, and we use those funds for that purpose. But that's the limit of what we think we can do with it. We can't go in and repair other sidewalks or add sidewalks to neighborhoods. We get that question a lot when we're doing those projects. The neighbors want us to build a sidewalk, and it's just not authorized in that, that particular bond program.
So bear with me. I've got the wording for the two thousand and sixteen version. And let me know if this wording has changed with the newest one, but it's to provide funds for the purpose of reconstructing, repairing, improving, rehabilitating existing streets, roads, intersections in the city of Norman, Oklahoma, including lighting, sidewalks, bike paths, landscaping, related drainage improvements, driveway reconstruction, and other related improvements. Has the wording changed with the two thousand and twenty-one version?
I don't think so. I'd have to look at that. But again, that would, that, that list of applications would be intended, at least relative to sidewalks, to address that sidewalk ramp provision.
Same with street lighting, for example, where as you're resurfacing the street, if you had to replace a corner street light because you damaged it, that is authorized under the, under the program. But just as Catherine was saying about the, the public utility project, sidewalks are clearly not a public utility. So you could not do a sidewalk project and call it a sidewalk project, but if there is some sort of a curb repair, something that you have to do related to the resurfacing program that is a public utility, then there has to be language to authorize that as part of the street project.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one last question. We keep saying the word property, which alludes me to property taxes, which alludes me to the property tax collectors. Is this not anything that we can get county to help on, since this is, you know, parcels, people's property? They can't assist us in funding this at all?
I have to look at the title that deals with county specifically, but this is specifically something that's outlined as something the municipalities can do in Title XI, which is cities and towns only.
All right. Any more questions, comments from council? Nope, nope, nope. Okay, then we'll move on to item number two, submission of the
Submission of the revenue expenditure report and I will recognize Mr. Anthony Francisco for that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um I am going to uh just pull up part of the report that you see each month. Um, and again, this is on the revenue side. But you see that in the general fund and in the general fund, this is misleading as we talked about last meeting because we're booking the the uh, the CARES Act grant revenues in the general fund. So if you were to factor out those CARES Act revenues, we're in the general fund, just kind of right on right on budget, which is, which is a good thing. Um, I chalk it up to the revenue projectors acumen. Uh, but a more honest person would, would chalk it up to freak luck. Because, you know, we really, with all of the COVID things that have been going on, we really don't have a whole lot of um, knowledge or, or, you know, information about what's going on until it happens. But, but all of these things are kind of coming out in the wash and we're coming out okay. I would also, if I can move down in the report. I thought I could move down in the report. Yeah, okay. I wanted to point out what's going on in the um in the excise tax fund. Um, and we got a really big one-time payment uh for uh those apartments that are being built in University North Park. So that's what you're seeing there on the commercial side. But, but all of those things taken together with the excise tax fund, which is really closely related to what's going on in the development community has performed pretty well this year. And that's the first time that's happened in a couple of years. So, so that's a very positive thing. We'll continue to monitor revenues and expenditures as we go forward. Um, and we'll try to respond to any questions that you have. Uh, one thing I would also point out is just the ongoing wild fluctuations um in our sales taxes. They are measured from month to month. Uh, I kind of predicted that April was going to be down because that's reflecting the, the, the big freeze, if you will. I think so McGeaden, as Daryl calls it, in February. Um, I hope and think that that will come back somewhat in May, which is going to be reflective in what was going on in March. Um, so I think that we will close this fiscal year with our sales taxes um, up a bit from last year, but just wild fluctuations within the year. And, and, and again, we'll see, but, but I just, I I'm encouraged that, that we're coming out of the COVID period um and, and going back to a fairly strong uh growth pattern. It's just very variable um within the, the time periods that we're measuring. So if there's any questions, we'll try to respond to them.
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Madam Chair, I, I, I will um just comment that uh we, we have said sometimes it is better to be lucky than good, but uh, Mr. Francisco's experience in really understanding um our revenue patterns and having tracked the expenditure, the spending habits of our population and seeing those change over time. Um, he's been very accurate when he gives us the heads up, hey, you know, this is the month where the freeze is going to present itself, or this is the month where stimulus checks begin to show up. Um, so I'll chalk it up to the skill of Mr. Francisco. And, and, and if, if there's luck in it, we'll take luck anytime we can get. I know that um a lot of our neighboring agencies and doing their revenue projections for last fiscal year. Um, some of them did much better than they projected. Some of them didn't do near as well as they projected and hoped. Uh, for us to come in remotely close to where we projected is really wonderful news from, from our perspective. It means that our expenditures were proposed to line up with that level of revenue. So we are better off and we are not surprised. And right now, knock on wood, we're not surprised. We're okay. We're kind of where we, we need to be on the revenue side, which means uh we're not bouncing checks. So uh, Anthony and I, we, the, the conversations we had this time last year, honestly, some of the assumptions we made, well, the pandemic will go away in the summertime and we'll have sports at OU. I mean, that was factored into, you know, our, our revenue projections. And those elements did not come true, but other things did, like people um didn't go on vacation and they spent their vacation money at home. They bought pelotons and they bought trampolines for the kids. And that turned around uh and kind of filled the hole that may have been created by OU, you know, really limiting crowd size uh in the stadium. And the, the, the data differences between sales tax and online use tax, really kind of a shocking story, but it shows that people stayed home and they learned how to shop online. We think those trends will probably continue uh into the foreseeable future because people got comfortable shopping online. So we do take every month, every sales tax report we get uh as a learning opportunity. And uh there have been no shortages of learning opportunities in the last twelve months. Mr. Francisco, uh, great job. I'm glad your hand is on the wheel.
Thank you, sir.
I agree. And as a person who is starting to work on the budget for a state agency, we are not faring as well. So yay, City of Norman. Uh, Councilmember Hall.
It's really more of a, a brief comment, but as long as, you know, we're applauding Mr. Francisco's forecasting skills. Way to go. And I just, it's just a such a roller coaster ride to look at the last chart on the sales tax percentage change. And I just wondered if you had um any explanation for August and March being so far beyond what we were expecting.
Different explanations for each of those. August, remember, is the month when um folks are doing their back-to-school shopping. Um, and because there was no school uh in session, folks as Daryl was saying, were spending those, those things that, that met money on other things. A lot of times uh back-to-school shopping is not reflected until another couple of months, whereas in this case, folks knew that they weren't going to have to buy uniforms and that sort of thing for school. So they went out and bought more groceries in the month before. I think a lot of that is being reflected. Um, in the March period, I think that did have a lot to do with those stimulus checks. Um, and, and that was new money to the economy uh that was being picked up in a month-over-month basis. So so there's different explanations for each thing.
Yeah.
And we just try to, to factor in what may happen and then just kind of report what did happen uh, uh after the fact.
Yeah. Well, it just is um interesting and I think we're all breathing a collective sigh of relief that we're um, on target of where we need to be going forward. So that's really good news. Uh, thank you for that.
Councilmember Nash, nothing? Yep. All right. Well, Anthony, take that luck to the tracks, my friend. Okay, item number three, submission of the report on open positions. And I will recognize Gaila Hicks for that presentation. Maybe.
So sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Um, there's been a couple of changes since you got your report, so I'll just highlight one or two of those. Um, the Director of Parks and Recreation position has closed. We've got many applications. So Daryl will be uh reviewing those and, and going from there. Um let's see, the Recreation Superintendent position, uh Westwood Golf, we've got that one filled. Um Sustainability Coordinator, we've received about five applications on that one, so we still have it open. So that's, that's a little update. Any questions?
Um, I did uh have a conversation with Mr. Foster and I asked why he thought uh there was so much interest in his position. We received applications coast to coast. And his response was crystal clear. He said, who does not want to be the Director of Fun? I thought, I agree. So lots of great interest. Apparently Norman is still a very attractive place.
Yes.
Well, that's good news and uh have fun, Judd. I wish I could retire. That would be nice. Okay, no council comments on that one? No, no. Okay, item number four is miscellaneous comments. If anyone has anything else they'd like to say? Y'all making this way too easy for me. Well, there's
I will say is, you know, you've gotten your budget documents now and as you're reading them over in preparation for Tuesday's meeting and the ones coming up, feel free to give Kim Kaufman or myself a call or an email. It will, will walk you through whatever is in there um so that you can make better decisions going forward.
Daryl, is it confirmed that next Tuesday will, we will be voting?
Yes, ma'am. We will uh reaffirm or ratify uh our, our budget adoption. And uh we will, uh, I think the agenda for Tuesday night will include an executive session for the city attorney uh in her office to brief council on the impacts of the court's ruling. And then we will go into special session. Um, we will uh walk council through the steps to uh re-adopt the current fiscal year budget. And then we will jump into the previously scheduled topic of an introduction to what next fiscal year's budget looks like initially.
You have an exciting next few weeks ahead of us. So um let us all just remind the public. I know there's a lot of interest. Let's make sure we get those dates out, council members. And um there's no further comments. Then this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.